You're live, your worship.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, council, special guests, I'd like to call the special committee the whole housing solutions workshop to order for adoption of the agenda. So I want to make that motion, councillor Terry, councillor Devlin, all in favor, motions carried. We're going to go right into our delegation and presentations. We have McCullough Development Services here to do a presentation. Folks, the floor is yours. Introduce yourselves if you want, Mr. McKay and Joel Comer.
Great, thanks everyone. Hi, Mr. Souls. Hi, Rest of Council. Thank you very much for having myself and my colleague Emily here today. My name is Sandy Mackey. I'm the Housing Research and Policy Lead at McCullough Development Services. And we've been asked by your staff to present briefly to you on non-market housing in British Columbia and the different role that municipalities are choosing to take within that non-market housing system. Paul, did you have anything you wanted to say to introduce the project before we got going?
Thank you, Mr. McKay. To your worship and all council, this is an extension of previous conversations you guys had as part of the housing solutions project that is underway. So it's looking at going through all the work that's been done on housing and having conversations with council in response to a resolution that council passed for us to explore the viability of a housing authority in 2023, so that work that we're continuing to do right now. And we are hoping to get some priorities from council out of this workshop and identifying some gaps in our current processes. Should council feel that there are already gaps, so that we get an idea on how to continue to move forward to address this pressing need within the community.
Thanks, Mr. Simon.
Perfect. Well, with that, I think we can probably jump in. Just bear with me while I share my screen. And if someone could just give me a wave, confirm that you can see that.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Great. Well, again, as I said, this is the City of Revelstoke Housing Vision Workshop. The goals, as they've been articulated by Mr. Simon, are pretty clear. And hopefully you've got a good idea of what we were going to be doing today. I'll start by briefly introducing our agenda for this session. First, Emily and I will introduce ourselves and our organization. We'll talk a bit about non-market housing in British Columbia, and then we'll review the role that local government can take in the non-market housing sector. We'll have time for discussion and some questions. The discussion will surround kind of priorities for council and some of the goals you have for your involvement in the non-market housing sector moving forward. So as I said, my name is Sandy Mackey. I'm joined today by my colleague Emily Johnson, who will be helping to co-facilitate this session and taking notes throughout. My sincere apologies that I cannot be with you in person today. Unfortunately, our offices are on Vancouver Island where the, we're completely snowed in. Fortunately, I think in most communities with this level of snow, you'd still be able to get a flight out, but not on Vancouver Island, so. Great. Briefly, McCullough Development Services is a professional consulting firm with planners, development consultants, project managers, and nonprofit housing experts. We've got well over 30 years of experience in both the market and non-market housing sector, but primarily within the non-market housing sector, building affordable housing across British Columbia. Partner with all level of governments, including municipalities, indigenous communities, and private industry. Have an entirely indigenous board of directors, and we are the largest operator of affordable housing for indigenous families in British Columbia. And I'd like to acknowledge today that I'm joining you from the traditional territory of the Kungan, Chupsam, and Musana peoples from our head office on Station Avenue, just outside of Victoria, British Columbia. Our expertise really does span the breadth of the housing sector in British Columbia, from community planning and working with municipalities like yourselves, all the way to building affordable housing units and helping to operate those units across communities. We truly do try to navigate the entire complex system to bring projects from concept all the way to community. To give you a sense of the scale of the non-market housing sector in British Columbia right now, our organization alone has more than 50 active projects across 30 communities. That represents well over a billion dollars in project costs. And that 2,800 new home number is actually significantly higher than it was when we put this slide together. And that represents more than 500 jobs, mostly in the construction industry. Affordable housing is incredibly important right now. There is more money and more investment in affordable housing than ever before. And I think it's an ideal time to be looking at expanding your municipal role or thinking about how you can support non-market development in the city of Revelstoke. As we get into the sort of meat of this presentation, if there are any questions at all, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. You can either use the Zoom tools that you have available to you, like raising your hand, or feel free just to speak up and interrupt. It can be difficult to field questions through Zoom, but please, if you do have a question, don't hesitate to interrupt me if that works best for you. So quickly, non-market housing, we can start by looking at some of the housing need that is current in B.C. and across Revelstoke. One thing we know for certain is that your population is growing, and that has led to an increase in demand for affordable housing. Revelstoke in particular is a unique community in that not only is your permanent population growing, but we know that you've got a sizable seasonal population. And you've got some really interesting data and done some interesting studies that has helped you track and manage that seasonal population. The biggest challenge that we're seeing across British Columbia and in your community is that rental housing in particular is becoming more expensive and very hard to find. As of your last housing needs assessment and the figure that's quoted in your housing action plan, about 35% of all renters in the city of Revelstoke are in core housing need, which means they are either in an unaffordable, unsuitable, or a home that's in poor condition. And it's not just renters. Owner-occupied housing is also increasing in price pretty dramatically. We were speaking with staff last week, and the latest figure that is sort of generally accepted in your community is that a household needs an income of at least $190,000 a year to be able to afford a single detached home. That's a very, very high income to earn. That's two people at least with two excellent jobs to afford a single detached home. And what that means, those two things combined, is that the number of renters is increasing in your community. It's increasing across nearly all age cohorts, from the very young to even into folks in their middle age. And then we're seeing more and more seniors renting at increasing numbers. And that jump from renting into ownership is becoming increasingly hard to make, especially for first-time home buyers and for folks without, you know, significant, you know, capital that they're receiving from a family member or through generational or inherited wealth. Very, very difficult to enter the home ownership market in Revelstoke and across British Columbia. So how did we get here? I think it's important to realize that this is not a change that happened overnight. It's not a change that happened since the last census or the census before that. It is a change that has been happening incrementally since as early as the mid 80s in Canada. The current housing situation in British Columbia and across our country is the result of systematic disinvestment in social housing and rental tenure housing, particularly beginning in the early 90s. But we're seeing trends that began in the early 80s that have led to some of the crisis situation that we're seeing today. The graph that I've put up on the screen here represents basically the number of social housing units that were built in Canada with data from CMHC between 1972 and 2010. The bars are the number of social houses that used to be built, and the line is the percentage of social housing as a percentage of all housing built in our country. So you can really see that sometime kind of in the late 70s and early 80s, there were some policy shifts that really came to a head in the early and mid 90s, where social housing investment plummeted to, you know, well under 2% of all homes being built in Canada as affordable in perpetuity, social housing, and very few, like, real numbers of homes being built. And it wasn't just social housing. Similar graphs like this exist to show you the disinvestment in rental tenure housing as our markets changed and prioritize ownership tenure, single detached housing, and sort of those more high expense housing types. This led not only to a limited number of those units being available, but a rise in stigma associated with those types of uses as the buildings that were there aged and maybe were not appropriately maintained and/or operated. That led to things like zoning restrictions to make affordable rental housing more difficult to build. In the last 10 or 15 years, staffing communities like Revelstoke and across the country, especially in British Columbia, have done tons of work to undo a lot of those policy mechanisms that make developing social housing or non-market housing and rental tenure housing more difficult. And for the first time in decades, we are seeing that rental tenure housing in many communities is surpassing the growth of ownership tenure housing, which is really exciting. We're starting to see ourselves sort of digging out of this hole. But just as this problem was not created overnight, it will not be solved overnight. It is going to take generational investment and generational commitment to change the way our housing system operates and to see those affordability returns. Non-market housing is really critical part of solving this housing crisis. Because of land costs, material costs, construction costs, profitability margins, new market tenure housing, so housing that is priced by the market is rarely quote-unquote affordable, especially to folks earning the median income or below in your communities. Building is more expensive than ever before. We work in the development industry, and we have seen firsthand that our buildings have gone from $200, $300 a square foot, sometimes lower than that only a few years ago, to typically over $500 a square foot now, often in smaller communities or communities that are further away from, you know, production hubs. We're seeing that number being even higher, sometimes closer to $600 a square foot. Building rental units is also a huge investment, as you well know. Most market-oriented developers need to see a return on that investment, which means that they're not offering the units at a price that is, you know, at what they paid for them. They have to offer them to the market at something that guarantees a return on their investment for their investors. One of the only ways to maintain an affordable rent structure in our current housing ecosystem is through provincial and federal programs that provide capital and ongoing operating funding to support affordable rents. So it's not just about adding more units, it's about adding the right types of units, both market and non-market housing. More units can reduce competition, but it rarely reduces cost. What we need to see is kind of that balance between non-market and market to actually bring down price across the board. And restoring that balance is really critical to achieving affordability. So let's talk about the housing continuum a little bit. This is something we pulled from your housing action plan. And it shows kind of what we conceptualize as the traditional housing spectrum, from emergency shelters and transitional housing on the far left to single detached homes on the far right. And generally, the level of government assistance decreases as you move along the continuum. And the amount of income that it would require to enter at each place on the housing continuum increases. What we're seeing, however, is that those income levels on the bottom are not necessarily matching with the types of housing that we're seeing on the top in the same way they used to. For example, just looking at this piece, this below-market affordability rentals and co-ops, where maybe in the past, folks of low incomes would have benefited almost exclusively from this type of housing. That is not the case anymore. Now we're seeing that non-market housing is critical to housing folks that have low incomes, low to moderate incomes, moderate incomes, and it's sometimes in some communities even above moderate incomes, that are having a huge problem accessing affordable, accessing an affordable option in the market. So non-market housing is no longer just for folks with low incomes. It is, you know, represents a variety of different rent structures, different affordability structures, and are tailored to a number of different income classes across our communities. There is tremendous variance currently within non-market housing. As I said, multiple definitions of affordable, varying degrees of support or associated staffing supports. And different societies have different specialties. Some may focus on a specific type of housing. Others will maintain a really broad portfolio that could have units that are being rented at slightly below market and units that are being rented at, say, the shelter rate of income assistance in British Columbia. I think something to keep in mind is that non-market housing, almost always, a non-market unit looks just like a regular rental unit. They are indistinguishable in form. They're only distinguishable by their tenure and by the financial relationship that the occupant has to the unit. Typically, non-market housing is nonprofit operated, though there are some circumstances where they're operated by other types of organizations. They are almost always supported by government grants and subsidies, for example, B.C. Housing, CMHC, in some cases, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And in your area, the Columbia Basin Trust is a critical funder for these types of programs. And affordability is secured through legal agreement, which means that the units are affordable in perpetuity. And I think it's also important to highlight a couple of key definitions within non-market housing. Affordable housing is a term that we throw around a lot, and it can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. The standard definition of affordable housing, it doesn't matter if it's market, non-market, owned, or rented. A house is affordable if the occupying household spends less than 30% of its pre-tax income on shelter costs. That is what unaffordable housing definition is. If we want to move into a more nuanced definition, non-market affordable rental housing would be subsidized through grant and/or operating subsidy by a senior government, typically operated by a nonprofit or local government entity. This is kind of where we're getting at, the types of units that we're trying to incentivize in our communities. There's also some definitions that are more common, especially in resort communities. Workforce housing, which I know is of interest to lots of folks in Revelstoke. It's a type of non-market affordable rental housing, affordable to individuals and families who tend to earn around the median income in a community. And you can tie eligibility for those units to employment status within your community. However, it is not tied to a specific employer. Housing that is tied to a specific employer is often referred to as employee housing. So it's owned and provided by an employer and tied to an individual's employment status with that employer. It is not typically considered non-market housing as it is privately owned and subsidized by a private entity. Typically, B.C. Housing, CMHC, those types of funders, they're not particularly interested in supporting employee housing. They're more interested in subsidizing the individual or the family, the occupant, rather than the business. So let's take a look at how it works in British Columbia. Just a really brief primer. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with this system already. In B.C., our non-market housing is driven through partnerships. Capital and operating funders are typically the most impactful partner in that they provide the biggest portion of the expense that it takes to get these buildings built. B.C. Housing and CMHC are most critical funders in British Columbia. There's also the advocacy and sector support partners, which include the B.C. Nonprofit Housing Association and the Aboriginal Housing Management Association. They represent and advocate for nonprofit operators across the province. Nonprofit operators are the actual organizations who operate and manage affordable housing. Often, they even own the buildings. And then the last major player is development consultants. They are development experts and project managers. Nonprofit operators, their focus is often on maintaining the units, supporting their tenants, and keeping their buildings operating over the course of 60 to even longer periods of time. Development consultants offer a specialized skill set. They can help those nonprofit operators navigate the complex development world in order to get these units built and more units built, and, you know, increasing the number of affordable housing units across British Columbia. More recently, local governments has emerged as a really important partner to supplement this ecosystem. Local governments now act as critical partners and facilitators, in some cases as critical funders, developers, and even operators. And we're going to touch more on those roles in the next section of this presentation. So here's an example of how this system works in practice. I've highlighted an example from outside of your community, but within the CBT. So you can see an example of how this sort of works and how the funding relationships and partnerships work. This is a building that's being constructed for the Robson Valley Community Services Society. It includes 14 affordable housing units for women and children, as well as 72 childcare spaces. The capital and operating funds for this building came from B.C. Housing, who provided the majority of the development funding. The Ministry of Education and Childcare provided support for the childcare spaces. And the Columbia Basin Trust, who supplemented the capital budgets with their own contribution. The nonprofit operator in this case is the Robson Valley Community Service Society. McCullough Development Services acted as the development consultant, supporting the society as their representative in the process. And land was provided through the village of Vailmount through a long-term lease. This is a really common way that housing gets built in British Columbia. And I know that the city of Revelstoke has basically done a very similar process to this for some of your developments. And I think that's a really spectacular asset that you already have and a system that you already have working for you at the city level. There are, as I mentioned, more funding available for this type of development than ever before. I'll highlight three key programs right here. So the first is B.C. Housing's Community Housing Fund, or CHF. This is a $3.3 billion investment to build more than 20,000 affordable rental homes for people with moderate and low incomes by 2031-32. The grant provides $158,000 per unit in grants, as well as construction financing and ongoing operation subsidies to make sure those rents stay low in perpetuity. There is actually another funding call expected in summer, fall of 2024. So we're seeing nonprofits and communities across the province preparing themselves for this funding call in the short term. Another key program is the Provincial Redevelopment Program. This is what's being used to develop your Downey Street project. Through this program, B.C. Housing is redeveloping 10 PRHC or Provincial Rental Housing Corporation-owned housing sites. The structure depends on the characteristics of the specific project, tenant population, and different types of layer of funding. But in Revelstoke, they have set sort of high-bar income levels that people would need to qualify underneath. I believe you're getting between 150 and 160 units across three phases. The last time I checked, it's a pretty spectacular project and very exciting to see happening in your community. The program provides construction financing, takeout financing, and grants. But unlike the Community Housing Fund, it does not provide ongoing subsidies. That means that rents are probably going to have to be offered at a closer-to-market rate in order to ensure that the building is financially viable. Whereas buildings developed through CHF tend to be able to achieve a greater level of affordability because of that ongoing operating subsidy. Another key funding program that is assessed federally and across the country is the CMHC COI program or co-investment funding. It provides similarly capital to partnered organizations that have already secured funding from other levels of government. In B.C., they have partnered with organizations that have received funding through CBT or through B.C. Housing or through a combination of CBT and B.C. Housing. They're providing up to $75,000 per unit in grants, and they also assist with closing funding gaps. COI accepts applications on kind of a rolling basis until the money runs out effectively. So it is definitely a tool that we're seeing being used across the interior to fill funding gaps and to, you know, partner with B.C. Housing or layer with CBT funding. So that's kind of it. That's the overview of the non-market sector in British Columbia. It is very complicated. It is very nuanced, and this has only been, you know, a 20-minute presentation. So if you have further questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. But I think it makes more sense to get to how the city of Revelstoke fits within that non-market housing sector currently and what are the potential roles you can play moving forward, because I know that's kind of the thrust of today's conversation.
Any questions, council? Saying none, carry on. Thank you.
So we pulled this piece directly from your housing action plan. When I talk to communities about progressive housing action, a community guy I often point to is the city of Revelstoke. I think you've probably done more than many communities have in a similar position to yourselves. And this housing action plan is an excellent document from which your staff and your decision-making can flow. You've highlighted four key roles for the municipality in this document. The first is to facilitate development, typically through OCPs, local area plans, housing policies, community many contributions, density bonusing, et cetera. Regulate, which is regulating form and tenure through zoning bylaws, exploring things like rental-only zoning, as well as short-term vacation rental restrictions. And you've also put in place regulations to present renters and other rental housing stock that's maybe at risk of being redeveloped. Incentivizing and investing. So this highlights activities such as reduced parking requirements, expedited approvals, which I know is something, you know, speaking to your planning team, they've done a great job of expediting approvals for non-market housing projects. It's really incredible the speed that they're turning those things around. I know as a developer, an affordable housing developer, that's one of the pieces that we really struggle with is seeing those quick turnaround times. And the last one is partnering to educate and advocate. And just going through your document, we've pulled out some of your key actions under each of these. Reviewing city lands and examining the feasibility for the purpose of affordable housing. Land is one of the most critical tools that you have at your disposal as a local government. The right site provided either through long-term lease or through below-market value sale can be the thing that gets the project off the ground, the thing that makes housing work, even if you're not directly funding it through capital contributions. As well, your CAC policy and your density boosting programs and your affordable housing reserve all emerge under the facilitate development banner. The second, regulating, looks at your zoning. Do you increase the supply of workforce housing, short-term rental regulations, rezoning comprehensive development proposals to include a diversity of denser housing forms, encouraging small lot sizes and expanding gentle density option across single-detached zones? I think a big piece of this regulating action is going to come as the province releases new legislation as well. So I know your staff are on top of that and will be sort of moving to make sure that this regulate function stays contemporary with the new provincial legislation. And then incentivizing and investing, your action is to incentivize deeply affordable second-stage and supportive housing types, as well as partnering to educate and advocate, supporting grant applications to provincial and federal funding opportunities. All of this is excellent, and I know you've gone even further directly funding some projects, and we'll talk a bit about that. But in your affordable, in your housing action plan, below this four key roles for the city piece, there's kind of this other section here, which highlights other roles in the housing system for municipalities. And you probably can't read this, but the first kind of sentence of this section is, "Local governments in B.C. are rarely involved in the building and operating of affordable housing and related services." And that's true. It's a very rare circumstance that local government actually goes further than what the city of Revelstoke is doing to become a funder more directly, an operator, and a developer. But that's not to say that that is not a role you could potentially take on at the city. And we're going to talk about what each three of those pieces means. So first, looking at the role of funder. There are two ways that the city can move into the role of funder, one of which you are already doing. So first, it'd be project-oriented financial support or capital contributions. So this will be providing direct funding for non-market affordable housing on a project-to-project basis through capital contributions. I know that in the past, you have supported your community housing society to, and funding actual pre-development activities. So this would be continuing that and maybe formalizing that support or planning to, you know, formalizing how you give out those grant pieces. In exchange for this type of support, typically, a local government would not have an expectation for a return on the investment, maybe a slight reporting requirement or things like that. But the project and its benefit to the community tend to be the return for project-oriented financial support. Going one step further as a funder would be to look at ongoing financial support. So rather than funding on a project-to-project basis, funding on an ongoing basis. So this would be providing funding to support non-market affordable housing operations and/or organizational development. So not just the development of buildings, but the development and strengthening of organizations. Often, this is related to a scaling up of an organization. This would typically be tied to a more robust reporting relationship where the organization that's receiving the money would be responsible for reporting back on an annual, semi-annual, you know, a chosen basis. And very often, councillor staff would have representation on the board of that organization. I know you already have council representation on the board of the Revelstoke Community Housing Society, so you've kind of got some of those things done already. An example of this type of funding relationship in B.C. would be the Squamish Community Housing Society. And I'll highlight some of what they do really briefly. Basically, there is a relatively new society, and they have received a five-year funding commitment from the District of Squamish to support staff costs, infrastructure, startup costs, board development, et cetera. The key functions of this organization are to lead and support the development of new affordable housing in the district, to coordinate and improve affordable housing operations across multiple providers, and to educate, engage, and advocate for affordable housing within the district. The board of the society is made up of representatives from various community nonprofits. They have four key housing providers, all of whom sit on the board of this new organization, as well as representatives from the district and other representatives of various housing-related skill sets. So like real estate development from across the community. I think that that board representation and the way that this board is constructed goes a long way towards defining how they operate within their community. So they are trying to coordinate and improve housing operations by putting all four of the major housing providers together in a room to enable efficiencies. And they have an expectation that they're going to develop and operate their own units as well. Currently, through the district's perpetually affordable housing policy, there are 443 units that have been allocated or committed to the society through developer contributions. There's an expectation that they will slowly take on those units as they are completed. The district is also supporting, in addition to this funding commitment, land contributions to actually get. land contributions to actually get projects up and running, new projects up and running that rely on B C housing or C M H C support. The second key role, going a little bit further, would be to take on the role of developer at the city level. So within this sort of role, the municipality would take on the role of developer through typically a housing authority or corporation model. There is significant cost associated with this startup, ongoing staffing, development and pre-development costs. But the focus is on building and then partnering with a nonprofit to operate the units typically through an operating agreement. This is pretty standard. So for example, when B C Housing owns a site and builds a project, they would partner with a nonprofit to operate those, that site through the same tool, an operating agreement. So in this case, it would be the municipal authority or housing corporation developing the units and owning the land and site and then partnering with a nonprofit to operate. Based on what we have learned from similar sized communities across the province, we can expect that a municipal authority or housing corporation would be at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual operations costs. And that's typically before starting your investment in development. That budget is based on, you know, a two to two and a half staff person plus all of the infrastructure that a new, a new, you know, a corporation does, you have to take on. A great example from another resort municipality within British Columbia is the Tofino Housing Corporation. The T H C or Tofino Housing Corporation is a municipal nonprofit housing corporation fully owned by the District of Tofino. The T H C acts as a land steward or facilitator and then partners with Catalyst Community Development Society to act as a third party nonprofit housing developer and provider. So they actually, you know, they, they actually partner to develop the units and then catalysts will operate them. That operating agreement has an opt out clause effectively where T H C is working to build their internal capacity. And then after a certain number of years, they have the option to, you know, cancel that operating agreement and actually take the units back and operate themselves. T H C receives an annual project revenue from the district through an agreement for M R D T. It's in the range of two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per year. And that represents the overnight accommodation portal portion of the M R D T. So that's where they get their direct funds. And that is a financial tool that you have at the District of Revelstoke that not a lot of non-resort municipalities, that most non-resort municipalities don't have access to, which is, it's kind of exciting. The composition of the leadership structure of the T H C, Tofino Council appoints the Board of Directors on an annual basis. There are four district staff and elected officials and three independent community members or related specialties that sit on the board. So not only do they own the organization in full, they also have a controlling interest on the Board of Directors. The current portfolio of the T H C, there's fourteen units that have been tenanted and seventy two under development. So, you know, keep that in mind. This T H C has been around for a long time now. I think it's been operating in its current form for well over five years, and they've only been able to, in that period of time, get fourteen units tenanted. There are more coming, which is great, but these are not short term changes. These are long term investments, generational investments in your community.
Mackey, Councilor Cherry has a question.
Sure.
Thanks, Worship, to the chair, Mr. Mackey. Just a question about O A P funds that were used by the Tofino Housing Corp. Were those for a physical project or were they more administrative, were they used for administrative roles?
I think that they were used for administrative roles. I, I think, I, I know that in the past, the M R T T has only been able to be used for project related, like for actual projects. But I feel like there's something where it has been changed to allow for that money to be used for administration operations. Maybe Mr. Simon knows that more off the top of his head. I saw him throw his camera on, but I, it's something I can also dig into for you as well.
It's to Simon.
To your worship, Councilor Cherry, our understanding is that the Tofino situation that they have right now because of their secluded location of the, the community and their dire housing needs is that it is a bit of a different scenario for them and how the M R D T funding can be used through their O A P funds. Staff's understanding and discussing with the O A P program administrators is that we wouldn't be able to use it in the same way right now. But certainly if council wanted us to explore that further, we could look into that. And I know Mr. Etia, who's on the call right now, has been deeply involved in some of these conversations. And I know he's been advocating for more flexibility in those funds as well.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I don't see Tofino being much more remote than Revelstoke since we're both about two and a half hours from a city. But yeah, it'll make a motion at the end of this. I appreciate the answers, guys.
Think one thing to keep in mind when we look at the O A P portion of M R D T as well is though it may not impact places like Tofino and Revelstoke to the same degree, we know that here in Victoria and other communities across the province, Airbnb and V R B O and those types of units, they've seen a significant decrease in the actual numbers of units and the profitability and the amount of units, amount of money that those units are paying into these tax programs over the last six to ten months. So. Okay. And the last key role is operator. So this is going basically as far as you can go within the current non-market housing system. In this role, the municipality would take on the responsibility of developing and operating affordable housing units within the community. You'd have an affordable housing operations portfolio that would then manage all of these units in perpetuity or for at least the length of a housing agreement with a senior lender. This is tremendous investment. So not only are you investing in, you know, startup costs for the, the corporation, development funding and development staff, you would also be investing in additional operations funding and operations staff. Typically, these types of organizations rely on, you know, there's a tendency to think that if you own and operate the units, you can use the rent structure to self-fund the organization and eventually accrue enough profit that you can reinvest and build more units. And that, that is true. Eventually, housing organizations can turn a small profit off of their units, but the goal is affordability. And that critical mass of units that allows you to start turning a slight profit only begins generating revenue after a really significantly large portfolio has been accrued. In some cases, it depends on the circumstances, location, the types of units that you're offering and the numbers of units and density of those units. In some cases, that critical mass can be starting to be achieved after a hundred, a hundred and fifty units. And in other cases, gay in a scattered site approach or with, you know, townhouse style units that require more ongoing maintenance, that can be closer to three or four hundred units. It really does depend on the circumstances. So relying on this to actually generate revenue is really not the, the best way to be, to be going forward. But it is sometimes a, a potential tool that can go into your toolbox. In B C, we've got a few examples of this. The Whistler Housing Authority is one a lot of people talk about. City of Burnaby recently launched their new housing corporation. And here where I am, the C R H C Capital Regional Housing Corporation is one of the oldest ones in the province. And I'm going to highlight the city of Burnaby because it has been the subject of a lot of news articles of late. Obviously, it is, it is a different scale than the city of Revelstoke. But I think it is the most kind of contemporary community that has undertaken this project within our current housing context. Whereas Whistler is, you know, significantly older, has been around for a long time and exists in a very different context than maybe you would be looking at now just starting. So the Burnaby Housing Authority is an arms length municipal housing corporation owned in full by the city. So similar to the Tofino model, they have four key functions. Acquire, develop, operate and administer non-market housing. The board is going to have ten members, three elected officials, one staff and six independent board members with experience in nonprofit housing or financial and legal sectors. So this is kind of a critical distinction. Burnaby does own the housing corporation, but the Board of Directors, they do not have control over, which is really interesting. So they've chosen to take kind of a backseat in the actual governance of the corporation. They are projecting that the housing authority will cost ten point five million dollars for the first five years of operations. That includes about half a million in one time startup costs and two million dollars in annual operations costs. And they anticipate beginning housing development work by Q four of two thousand and twenty four, so later this year. It's a big undertaking by the city of Burnaby, and they're putting a big investment in it. And so I, I wouldn't expect that a similar program in the city of Revelso could cost quite as much. But to be honest, that one time startup cost, regardless of how big your community is, I, I'm not sure that it will be that different. Maybe slightly smaller, but we're all pulling from the same small pool of talented people who understand and know this sector in British Columbia and that labor and that cost of, you know, starting up an office does not come cheap and is about the same whether you're in Revelstoke or in Burnaby. Okay. So before we jump into discussion, I want to highlight a couple of key considerations that you need to be considering as council members before deciding to expand your role in the housing sector. The first obviously is cost. I've highlighted some very high level numbers for you today, all of which I imagine are a bit shocking. It is a lot of money to build and manage housing in British Columbia right now. Market housing is even more to build and manage, but affordable housing, you really can't do it alone. Even the most well-funded housing authority or housing corporation still needs partnerships with senior lenders to make these affordable units happen. There's just no other way to enable affordable rent structures right now. Another thing to consider is the degree of control or ownership you need to have over your assets. Many municipalities are perfectly comfortable continuing kind of in the same situation you are now. Making land available at a, either through a long term lease or at a reduced cost to a nonprofit and expecting that nonprofit to develop the units appropriately underneath the guidelines that are provided by senior lenders. If you are moving forward with a housing authority or corporation, you need to consider, do you need full control over that organization? Does it need to be fully owned by the city? And do you need to have board control over all decisions? That also comes with different legal and borrowing implications. Depending on the legal structure, you would likely be impacting your municipal borrowing limits by taking on the debt associated with the new building. There are ways to protect the city from that through that sort of arms length housing corporation. But it does take quite a lot of, you know, startup legal costs and engaging with legal professionals to ensure that you are protecting your legal, your municipal borrowing limits and not impacted by the debt that's being accrued by a housing corporation or the borrowing it has to do to build these large buildings. That's one of the challenges with maintaining ownership over the built assets that you would be, you know, constructing in your community. So with all of those things, cost and the boring implications, you really do need to consider what municipal resources and assets you have that you can continue to contribute or contribute even more than you already are. Is it cash? Is it capital? Is it continuing to contribute land and pre-development funds? Is it going further and contributing operation funds? Or is it contributing more staff time than you already are to helping nonprofits navigate grant structures and, you know, acquiring distributing grant, grant funding that can be used to support projects in your community? Ease of implementation, obviously, taking a smaller step forward and, you know, providing something like ongoing operating funding is a lot easier to do and uses existing local infrastructure than establishing your own housing authority or housing corporation, right? One is a lot more involved than the other. And another consideration, if you are starting something new, is are you duplicating existing resources in your community? The Revelso Community Housing Society, though its portfolio is maybe smaller than you'd like to see, is, is a nonprofit with an excellent reputation in British Columbia. And is it worth repeating something that you already have? Or is it better to prop up the thing that already exists? Similarly to that point, what is the impact to existing providers and existing relationships within your community? What is the community perception if the municipality is duplicating that role? Or is, you know, being maybe perceived as a competitor within that space? What is your impact horizon? Obviously, using existing infrastructure in your community, existing organizations and existing partnerships is likely to have a greater short term impact than starting something new. So is your impact horizon to make the greatest impact possible in the shortest possible time? Or are you comfortable with more generational changes and generational expenses, frankly? The critical mass, do you expect to be able to build enough that you are a self-supporting organization? Or is, is it going to take longer to reach that critical mass of units that may require you to fund a new organization on a, on a greater, longer term basis? And then the last thing I'll highlight is that provincial legislation is changing. We have seen just in the past year, a lot of really interesting changes to our housing system. And we expect that in the next couple of months, we're going to see even more rolling out. There was a series of webinars in the last couple of weeks that I'm sure your staff attended, outlining a lot of the new zoning pieces and new, you know, infill and secondary suite and other options that are going to be happening across British Columbia. Revelstoke is not going to be exempt from those changes. And does it make sense to hold off for the short term to make sure you understand fully how that new legislation is going to roll out before starting something new? Another consideration you'll have to, you know, mull over as council before moving forward. So that is it for the formal kind of presentation portion of this. The next section of this of our, a couple of hours together is a sort of a facilitated discussion, which I will, I'm happy to lead. But I think we can take a break and see if there are any questions from council or from staff before we move into that. And then, you know, rather than, it could be that this is enough to, to get you going and we can kind of just sit back and take notes. But we'll, we'll see. So why don't we just start with questions and then we'll, we'll go from there and I'll stop sharing my screen for a few minutes.
Mr. Simon, do you have anything to say before I go to council?
Back to your worship, just want to say thank you to Mr. Strickay and his team for, for presenting today. They're very knowledgeable on the subject, so council asks a lot of questions. This is a complex area and we want to see some good discussion on this to help prioritize what the, the, the ideas from council are as we move forward with this project.
Great, thank you. Councilor Cherry.
Thanks, Worship. I just have a question. In the presentation, you mentioned a lot about different municipalities acting as developer. I'm curious if you have any stats that show what the cost per square foot may have changed to be when the municipality got involved as a developer versus private industry or other nonprofits? If there was a change.
Yeah, great question. I, I don't have any specific stats to, to share with, you know, in terms of what the difference would be. But my expectation would be that the highest cost per square foot would typically be within the market. Market units, because they're being rented out for a greater price point or being sold at a greater price point, tend to have higher levels of finishing, tend to have granite countertops, you know, nicer fixtures, the sort of higher end, you know, faucets and sinks and things like that. That all leads to a higher cost, cost per square foot. All of the units that are being developed through programs with B C Housing and with C M H C are pretty tied to their design guidelines, which holds us to a relatively, you know, the degree, the range of outcomes is minimized. And it means that our sort of square footage is numbers in terms of things like fixtures and, and those like extras are typically lower than they would be in a market project. Where those B C housing projects and C M H C projects tend to have sometimes higher is, is they meet a pretty high degree of environmental efficiency and they're designed to last a very long time, right? So I think that probably the market is still the highest cost per square foot. And then in the non-market and municipal development sector, because they're both relying on the same partnerships with senior funders, they would probably have a very similar cost per square foot. And my guess is, just based on Emily and I are doing work in Slocan right now, which I know is not a great comparator for Revelstoke, but our projects there, I think we're looking at between five hundred and fifty and six hundred dollars a square foot. I think Revelstoke would probably be slightly cheaper as you're a slightly larger community. But in the interior, generally, we see between four fifty to six hundred a square foot, depending on the specifics of the project.
No, that's, that's quite in line with what I'm seeing on the graphic sector as well, depending on the region. So that's that equates. Thanks.
Any other questions, Council? Councilor Eleanor.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide the opportunity. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just, people joined by video, can't see the rest of the room here, but members of the Revelstoke Community Housing Society, the co-chairs, Mike Brooks Hill and Sheena Wells are here. And I just wanted to, in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration, see if they have any questions at this.
To the chair, any questions, Miss Wells?
Mike probably has one too, but I don't know. He's the one. Thanks. The question that I have is about merging or absorbing or taking on a, a society into a housing corporation or housing authority and how that would work. Have you seen that done before? a housing corporation or housing authority and how that would work. Have you seen that done before? Um, thoughts on that?
Mr. McKay.
It is an interesting circumstance. I have not seen it done before. It's a, but it's a good question, Ms. Wells. The most challenging part of it would be to ensure that your senior funders with whom you likely have signed operating agreements that have probably a sixty-year time horizon. They would have to be okay with it. Um, if if your senior lender like B C Housing and C M H C was okay with it and there was a a cogent um plan in place to ensure that those units are going to be operated under the same terms and conditions under which they were developed. I think they would be okay with it. It would take a lot of work um to make that happen and it would probably take some legal wrangling and lots of collaboration between the society and this proposed authority or corporation. But I think in the, I think you could probably make it happen. But it wouldn't be cheap and it wouldn't be short-term, that's for sure. Particular, be it be a an undertaking, absolutely, but I I don't think it's the worst thing in the world.
Hello?
Oh, I got, I got one there.
Okay, Councilor Chair, you know, Council, our, uh, Mr. Brooks Hill.
Uh, just to kind of echo that, you did mention that uh there's ways that you've seen in the past where municipalities have taken on the role to create one or have propped up an already existing operator. Can you give us examples of how that was done so that uh if that's the way we go? We can learn from any of their hardships, troubles, tribulations?
Yeah, I mean, I think the circumstance in which you would prop up an existing operator would be um it it would be done in a like through an agreement where essentially the operator receives grant funding from the municipality in exchange for meeting a certain number of key deliverables. Um, those deliverables would include things like um, maybe uh, you know, additional staff-related deliverables. The changing of different systems within the organization to enable the ramp up to take on more units. Um, operations capacity building and maybe some board um management and training, things like that. That would be my guess as to how that would work. Um, I'm trying to think of a circumstance in which a municipality has supported a local operator to improve capacity. Um, and I'm not really, I'm kind of blanking on a good example for you outside of the Squamish Community Housing Society, which is the one that I shared.
Well, I think Revelstoke just did, uh, Mr. McKay.
Yeah.
We uh, we gave them a couple hundred K to uh, to move their projects forward.
So if I think the distinction that I'm trying to to see is the difference between project-oriented funding, where you're funding pre-development activities that are going to be related to like a project that's going in the ground to build more units, right? Versus organizational capacity building funding and that ongoing funding that they can rely on to maintain their staff and maintain their um their operations. And enable a buildup to take on more units. I think that's kind of the distinction I'm trying to draw. Um, and I'm trying to find one where maybe they're specifically supporting that operations side. I don't, I think it, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but I I think it would be a a really useful way to to help an organization scale up to take on more units, certainly.
Mr. Brooks Hill, comment?
Um. Just, uh, I'm curious if there's an example, you kind of alluded to um municipalities starting a housing authority and it's creating friction with an existing society or perhaps the other way around. Are there examples of that?
Um, I I do think that when when Tofino started, when the Tofino Housing Corp started, there was some friction within the community. I think that largely dissipated over time. But uh, I do know that something, when the Squamish Housing Society was starting, it's only a few years old now. They were very, very careful to ensure that their local operators were represented on the board because they wanted to avoid alienating the the four very successful organizations that have received B C housing funding. They also had an awareness that B C housing and C M H C aren't just going to give you money because you start a municipal corporation or authority. The largest piece that goes into their evaluation is your operating experience and capacity. So when they make a decision on funding, the biggest thing they look at is, do you have units currently? How long you've been operating those units? Have you been operating them successfully? Do we think you can continue to operate those units into the future? And so starting a municipality or corporation, you do not have that history to fall back on. So it is really important to, at the very least, um, you know, fold some of that expertise and experience that already exists in your community into those proposals and applications uh rather than just um going it alone.
Appreciate that, excuse me, appreciate that comment because in our conversations with B C Housing over several years now, we finally, last year, U B C M got them to tell us exactly what they needed as far as an operator for a project that they've uh tentatively had on the books for three years and starting to see this come to fruition and uh we tend to beat up on them just a little bit because we actually want to see the project come to fruition and get a little tired of dancing around the uh playing field here. So thank you for that comment. Any other questions, Counselor Chair?
I was just wondering if you could elaborate a bit more on the setup, sorry, the uh, the board makeup of the Squamish Housing. You said there was four key partners. Are there also council and staff?
Yeah, I I don't know if there's a staff representative, but there there is council representation on their board of directors. Um, I think at this point, there are ten board board reps. Uh, one from Squamish Nation. There's uh two or three representing local business, so so some key employers, including uh like the Squamish Gondola and and a couple of other things. There is a local for-profit or um a local market developer, a real estate agent, an accountant, uh, a lawyer and the four nonprofits and one or two elected officials. I think that's the makeup of their board. We worked with them to kind of define some of those board roles and it took a long time to get that balance right. Um, and uh, one thing that they have as a goal for their society is to have a representative on the board who is someone who is currently living in a subsidized housing uh unit in the District of Squamish. That's their goal. They haven't recruited anyone yet, but they're they're really hopeful that they can get an active tenant um to sit on their board as well.
Hello, counsel?
Uh, yeah, I appreciate all the info. I mean, obviously, what I'm trying to extract from you here is just examples of what has worked and what hasn't, so that uh we can learn from other people's uh experiences. So I appreciate all the info.
Yeah, I I just to touch on that, I I hate to say it, but it is a pretty rare thing to be undertaking a housing corporation or authority as a smaller community, right? The District of Tofino is probably your your closest comparator community. I know that Whistler is is also a comparative community, but because of when it was established and the um funding it received from the major employers within the the within Whistler, it it is slightly in a different kind of circumstance than you are. The reality is you're going to be going through this and relying on your staff, on the experts in your community and on some of the experts in the field. And and if this is a path you choose to go down, there may not be a ton of other communities to to steal from, to be honest. There's going to be some some pretty considerable risk on your part. And I think uh having some leeway with um your staff as they try to navigate these pieces with your local partners as they try to navigate these pieces is going to be critical because there isn't like a, if we do this, we will be successful kind of option.
Good. Counselor Orlando.
Uh, Your Worship, thanks you. And I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Is it Mr. McKay or is it pronounced differently?
It's it's pronounced Mackey, but I haven't corrected anyone in thirty years, so I don't think I'm not too worried about it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mackey. I do appreciate it. Yeah, just uh, my name is Aaron Orlando. I'm a councilor here. Uh, I am the council rep to the Revelstoke Community Housing Society. Uh, I was on the board previously uh during my time uh in council before as well. Um, you know, number one, I cannot speak highly enough of uh everyone who volunteers on that board over there, including the co-chairs who are present today at this meeting. Just a an amazing community organization full of a lot of capacity uh and a lot of uh uh community spirit and being extremely effective. You know, we're on a a clear pathway right now in our operations to become uh probably the largest landlord uh in the Columbia Valley within a few years if our plans goes well. Um, uh, and uh, just it's amazing, but uh to add a caveat to to that conversation is that we are meeting every day. I put a lot more work into the Revelstoke Community Housing Society than I do in terms of a role in council. Um, we are uh volunteer-run, so yesterday we had multiple meetings. Every day we have multiple meetings. We're right in the middle of uh of uh an R F P process uh with B C Housing, who we've worked with for a long time, build relationships with them and uh and go forward. So um, that is my core concern right now is that uh we do have amazing capacity over there. That's not going to last for forever and that's not something that's guaranteed. And that is something that uh, you know, we're operating at burnout level here and um and speaking to that capacity, which is is, as you say, a a big criteria for B C housing. Um, it takes a lot to get there. We have capacity in a lot of areas, including administrative capacity and other levels of capacity there. Uh, but um, um, in terms of, you know, specialty capacities such as development capacity, uh, all of uh, you know, the manpower or the the expertise and hours to do that, that's something that, you know, is cost money and takes time and we don't necessarily have that on the board. Um, um, as by far, by way of background, a couple of things more recently, you know, as as you're aware, um the one of council's goals and objectives of uh this term uh in our strategic plan was to explore the options for a housing authority. Um, if we rewind uh the uh uh clock by decade, that was uh more than a decade, a dozen years. That was one of the original intentions of uh the uh Revelstoke uh Community Housing Society was to be modeled on on a housing authority model. It did have more representation on the board. Instead of just one board member from council, it had I think a majority and that was wheeled back, I think in twenty sixteen or something like that. Um, and 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 that the genesis of that change uh was uh a few things, but largely uh the reticence of of uh uh municipalities to become involved directly in the housing uh business. Um, so there's a, there's an institutional uh resistance across the province for corporate services departments to be overseeing these. Uh, and they prefer other models and it's and and I think it's, you know, that's that's fine uh institutionally if that's uh uh the case, but uh one of the issues that we also face uh that we share with places like Tofino or Whistler is that we're a small resort municipality facing unique housing pressures that come with being a geographically isolated, small area with limited ability to develop. So we've had, for example, in the past few years, a little better now, we've had a a real um um employee uh crunch, real housing crunch. We've uh, you know, housing cost crunch. We've had, you know, the basic uh issue of um uh a household full of five or six people renting room by room who um may be working in a a a service industry job that doesn't have a high salary, outcompetes families. Uh, you know, that's, you know, whatever, nine hundred bucks a room times five or six versus what a professional family with kids can pay. So uh what soon happens is that uh when families uh need to uh you know, get uh evicted or have to move on from the rental unit, they end up being down the road and that is a roast to the quality of our community. Um, so um, I think, you know, what I think we all share in common here is a desire to um improve the situation and especially to access the new levels of federal and provincial funding and do our level best to maximize those funding opportunities, which we were letting go by the wayside for the past eight or nine years, as you know, uh, the the feds or the federal government or the provincial government would have a new opportunity and we just couldn't match it largely because we didn't have that core capacity and we didn't have that capacity. And that situation to some extent or another continues to now. So in the past few months, we've been trying to find ways to uh build that development capacity in our uh organization at the Revelstoke Community Housing Society to take full advantage. But um, the funding and revenue streams that are available to us are are one-off, uh which is great that they're one-off, but they're not um ongoing in nature. So we can't get those key staff people in place or we can't provide guarantees to attract that top level of um staff that we need to undertake the very difficult process of, for example, uh, you know, developing a hundred and sixty-five unit uh uh, you know, building uh and uh doing a good job of that. So um, I guess uh, you know, to read the tea leaves and to read the room, uh including uh our our partners here, I have a question I'd like to ask you, Mr. McKay, regarding the the uh um different scenarios or models that you presented. Um, uh, so for example, I believe one of them uh looked at providing O A P funding on an ongoing basis. So some of the municipalities have provided ongoing funding. Uh, one of the things I'm trying to do is maintain uh relationships with the the board, two boards here uh and uh really uh make sure we can find a way to provide that capacity there. So I'm seeking your thoughts on um, you know, uh trying to find a hybrid model, trying to find a made-in-Revelstoke solution that works for us, trying to find um, you know, an optimal professional capacity uh organization that builds social objectives within its housing goals and is effective at delivering units uh in our community. And uh, from your assessment, um, uh, looking at what we have and what we've managed to achieve so far and what we, what is on the horizon, which includes over, you know, imminent development and over two hundred uh units, if all goes according to our uh our our plans uh over at Revelstoke Community Housing Society. What would you recommend to get us, you know, what boils down to ongoing funding for dollars for that kind of organization, even if it's the Community Housing Society nonprofit, or it's some sort of hybrid, or it has a legal change? Uh, what gets that funding? What gets that capacity? What gets us all on board to uh get to uh to that place where we are maximizing every dollar available to us? And uh, making account on the ground, providing uh a broad spectrum of units to people in our community?
Mr. Mackey.
Thanks, Counselor Lando. That's a it's a lot there, obviously. One thing I can be unequivocal about is that basically since its inception, the non-market housing sector in British Columbia has been built off the back of volunteers. And the need is so great. It has changed so dramatically. The funding relationships, development relationships, the world we have to build non-market housing in is so unbelievably complicated that we cannot continue to rely on volunteers. We have to professionalize our sector. Um, it is being done slowly through organizations like the B C Nonprofit Housing Association. Um, organizations that are larger providers of units. Those sorts of things do exist, but in small communities, they are few and far between. So I think there is absolutely an unequivocal need to professionalize our sector, especially our smaller providers and in our smaller communities. Unfortunately, that takes investment on a ongoing basis, not on a project-to-project basis. And there may be periods where there isn't revenue coming into these organizations to match the staffing requirements that are needed to build those projects when they are available. And it, so one way of doing it is to ensure that your operations side is capable of operating the units that you currently have and scaling up to operate the units that you are expecting. And partnering with development consultants and other sort of specialists to actually build those units when the opportunity comes available. That way, at least you're only responsible for the operations portion of your, you know, portfolio, not the development portion as well. That's one way of doing it, as uh that societies are exploring. Um, where that money comes from, that ongoing funding? I don't think there is a good source for that right now. The larger organizations have a big enough portfolio that they're able to generate that income off of their units while still providing an affordable rent structure um that allows them to build those staff teams and maintain those staff teams and even scale up those staff teams when they expect more units to come. But really, that ongoing funding, that is not something that we see very often uh coming from a municipality in British Columbia. If it does come, it comes through something like that Tofino circumstance, which is unique. And that we don't even know if the, you know, city of Revelstoke has access to that, to use that ongoing, uh use those O A P funds to support ongoing uh organizational development and things like that. The only other circumstance I can think of is the District of Squamish making that five-year funding commitment to support um staffing and startup for the Squamish Community Housing Society. So, yeah, I I I fortunately, you know, haven't spent enough time in Revelstoke and haven't talked with your staff enough to know if that's something feasible for the city to take on. But as I said, there is, you know, a a point here where you probably are going to be going it alone and you won't be looking to other communities for examples and you're going to have to cut your own path. What that made-in-Revelstoke path looks like may be What that made in Revelso path looks like may be that the city provides some ongoing operations dollars or, you know, a a similar five-year commitment of operations dollars to help you uh help a society take on those two hundred plus units. That that may be the case. Um, I think in that circumstance, the society would probably need to provide a fairly robust business plan in exchange for that contribution that outlines how they're going to use that contribution to get to a self-sustaining position. Um, where their revenues will hopefully exceed their costs and they won't be as reliant on ongoing funding from the the city of Rebel Stoke. Yeah, is that, is that kind of answer your question? I feel like I'm copping out a little bit, but I I truly don't have a a perfect recommendation for you today, unfortunately.
Sure, uh uh Mr. Mackey, thank you much so much. I do appreciate it. I just put follow-up. Um, in the past year, we've brought self-prophecy management in-house, so that's, you know, capacity things, that's great. Um, uh, and we are engaging with those professional development staff as well, and we have uh managed to team all sort of one-off bridge funding as the uh um Marisol has mentioned with uh two hundred thousand pounds of funding. I have two requests. Number one, um, the slideshow that we have is slightly different as it doesn't have some of the in-detail slides. Uh, that's why I'm going to request those. And my follow-up question is related to that five-year commitment of funding uh for Squamish, um, uh, I believe, where, was that O A P that they mentioned that or where um? Uh, where did they, how did they manage to uh find that funding and fit it within? Often the barrier that that the municipal government has is uh the source of that funding has strings attached to it, so they're not at will to just uh simply sign it over because that was not the intent in the original agreement they have. So how did they manage to uh find that uh five-year funding?
Um, so the first one, absolutely. I uh I was reviewing my slides today and I decided that it was probably a good idea to add some more detail in, so I just added those few slides. I will absolutely send that off to you before the end of the day today. Uh, and number two, I believe that funding came from reserves. It may have come from their affordable housing reserve, which may have had less. Um, it may have been more flexible with it, I I but I'm not entirely sure. Uh, last week we were looking through um their annual budgets and we didn't find the line item. I think it's categorized under a generalized kind of housing and community services line item. Um, I will um I can work with staff um to to dig into that a little bit more and see if we can find out exactly the mechanism through which they made that funding contribution.
Excellent, Mr. Mackey. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
Mr. Parliament and then uh Mr. Athia, if you have uh any input from the social lens on this thing.
Quickly, so Sandy, thank you. Having worked on the island and worked with Capital Regional District. My hope is that regional districts can step up to the plate because they have the regional capacity. They've got bigger bank accounts and they represent a broad area. And I do believe the Capital Region District has a very good model. Having worked on projects in Suk where I spent six years and I know they just recently announced a four-story apartment in partnership with B C Housing and the Regional District. Can you share with this group, Sandy, just quickly? How the C R D approaches affordable housing from a regional perspective? Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks for bringing up a regional model. I I purposely didn't highlight it today because um it uh it didn't seem as relevant to be looking at your regional district as it did to be looking specifically at your municipality and and obviously I'm here to support you at the municipality level, but regional districts are interesting in that they have a tool available to them to directly support um housing directly support housing goals. A a regional housing service bylaw, like as you all know, to for a regional district to be providing a service, they they have to, or the regional district to do anything, they have to basically establish a service for that. And some regional districts have made a choice through a bylaw to establish a regional housing service. Through that regional housing service, they directly tax um residents of the regional district and then deliver on that service. Um, some great examples uh are the the C R D here. It is a, it is a direct tax that I receive on my property tax bill every year to fund the Capital Regional Housing Corporation. Um, it is a pretty significant tax in some cases. Um, not as significant as, say, our policing budget or or anything to that degree, but it is um, it is a line item that we see and I'm sure a lot of people are shocked by every single year. Uh, but that is used to be one of the largest providers of housing in British Columbia. Uh, they have a huge portfolio that stretches across all thirteen municipalities in the C R D. Two other more modest examples exist further up island. Um, the C V R D and the other C V R D, so the Comox Valley and the Cowichin Valley both also have regional housing service bylaws in place. They directly tax their residents and then distribute that money to um projects in different ways. In the Cowichin Valley, it's done through the Cowichin Valley Housing Association, which um provides grants to uh nonprofit housing organizations within the Cowichin Valley. They provide capital grants to support development. And I believe they provide some um operations grants, though I'm not sure the exact mechanism through which that works. In the Comox Valley, they use that tool to directly support um um service providers in uh, I believe Comox did not vote for it in the referendum, so Comox organizations do not receive cash through it. But um Courtney and Cumberland organizations do receive cash um through this system to support uh activities. I believe it's the Comox Valley Coalition to End Homelessness that holds the funding, though I could be wrong with that. Uh, and effectively they submit a business plan to the city, a five-year business plan, and the money is allocated from the fund to support that business plan, I think is how it was set up. Um, but that's an interesting one because it was passed through referendum and one of the three major communities did not vote for it. So only two of the communities pay the tax and only two of the communities receive the benefit. So I I do think that regional districts have the potential to fit this gap really nicely because of that direct financial tool. But if you are going to do it, it typically goes through referendum process, which can be incredibly contentious. So if that is a path that you think you might want to go down, it needs to be multiple years of preparation to ensure that the public is adequately informed um of of why their taxes are being directly increased and what that money is going to be used for has to be incredibly transparent. Um, but yeah, I think it's a great question. Thank you for asking it because I do think it's a really interesting tool that might slot nicely into this ecosystem.
Oh, good, thank you. Mr. Athia, comment?
Thanks, Mr. So, um. Hi, Mr. Mackey. I am sitting off screen right here, but uh I met you in your uh, in your ready, set, build E C M P H A course a little while ago, so uh, yeah, appreciate your help here as well. Um. I think, yeah, I I can definitely hear you know, the the difficult decision that needs to be made around um going it alone to some extent and extracting lessons from other communities, but not being able to um, not being able to do a clone of of anything that has been done. Um, and part of that is because of the kind of pioneering nature that Rebel Stoke had in the past and and how that's evolved. Um, I guess I I definitely hear the the distinction you've made very clear about um project and capacity funding. And um I think the the question that came up earlier around O A P um, that the answer to it also stems back to that different, that distinction and that um the ministry really does focus on project-related costs for O A P spending and not so, and not capacity. So yeah, it is, it is the strings attached to funding uh for finding capacity then is more limiting and probably the reason that it's just more rare to see uh municipalities going down that road because there's not new structure. Um, that's really well suited for it. I guess yeah, I guess the the question has been asked to to some extent, but are there are there any other sources of of funding aside from the ones that we've discussed that are, that are worth exploring um for this for the community?
Specifically for operations funding? Is that kind of most specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a great question. I I I can't think of any off the top of my head. I wonder if a a good source, although I know that you are um using some of the funding that you received through the redrip program to fund pre-development activities. I'm not, I think they might have an ability to use some of that to support organizational development. That might be one place to look. Uh, or maybe that's an easier place to advocate for a change in their funding program to sup- to enable a support of uh operational funding. Might be easier to advocate to redrip than it is to advocate to uh um, the faceless ministry. Um. But unfortunately, there just aren't a lot of great options when it comes to operations funding uh for nonprofits. I think that's one of the things that we're really struggling with as a sector is we know we have to professionalize, but there isn't a pot of money out there to help us professionalize. Um, we saw it in the latest um Community Housing Fund call where B C Housing asked us to uh for a significant portion of the points available in that program in the in the scoring sheet to indicate all of our policies around um diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging and reconciliation. And these are small societies, often with one or two staff members. They don't have full policy books for their team. They don't have full professional development um programs to use. And the types of organizations that do have those are multimillion-dollar-a-year organizations, and these are small societies. So I I'm hopeful that some of these challenges are are making their way up the decision-making chain and that there will be funding available for this type of work soon. I know it's something that we're advocating for and I think um to go back to those initial roles that you outlined as, you know, key roles for municipality, we we do often overlook that advocacy role um in because it is not as you know, it's not as fun as building new units and uh and actually seeing them go into the ground and supporting your community members, but that advocacy role is still a really important place for your municipality to uh be active. And um I think if there isn't funding available using your time at U B C M in the fall, using the uh conversations that you are able to have with B C Housing and with your partners to uh advocate for changes, whether it be to the O A P usage um options or for new grant programs to help your nonprofits and communities develop their infrastructure as an organization and as a housing provider. That would be a useful role for you to play, even if there isn't uh direct funding options available to you.
All right.
No, I I am, yeah, appreciate you um just sharing that that uh the challenge that the the non-market housing sector is going through with that and uh yeah, maybe even at the U B C M uh housing summit, that can be something that's that's discussed there.
Definitely.
Perfect, uh, Councilor Chair.
Thanks, Worship. Uh, I might be going a little bit off topic here, but I wonder uh Mr. McKay, if you have any experience with the, I think it was formerly the Nanamo Housing Society? And now I think they're Belinas? Now they're, yeah, how they were able to grow to eight hundred and fifty units in I don't want to say a relatively short time, but feels pretty quick.
Um, yeah, I don't have a ton of experience with with Belinas or the Nanamo Housing Society, um, but they are a a strong organization. Nanamo is a big city and they had a lot of housing challenges and uh they emerged as kind of the centralized place for taking on a lot of those new housing projects and, you know, as the strongest operator within that community. And I think that allowed them to put together some really competent and professional um applications to B C Housing and to other organizations. I know that our 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 um our development side actually worked with them on the the Butter Tubs Development, which is a fairly large apartment building. Um, but unfortunately, I don't have a ton of insight into how their organization developed. I do know that it's a, it's a really strong one. And I'm sure it has received a lot of um municipal support, whether through land transfers or land allocations and maybe through some project-specific support over the years. Uh, but my guess is that um they just kind of developed organically as uh different funding programs became available and they had, you know, the benefit of time on their side to, in order to do that. They have been around for quite a while, even though um it may seem like they've developed a lot of units in a short period of time. They are a very well-established um society in Nanamo for sure.
Thanks, and I appreciate that. Just trying to try to take in as much uh knowledge as we can here.
So, Mr. Mackey, just a question regarding uh land from uh provincial government, so um, I've sat through many renditions of B C Housing over the years and and I I have made the statement uh at one point that I will be coming back to them, looking for land once we uh we've got our land inventory now, but once we deplete some of that um and and that land will be in the regional district and it will be crown land. And, you know, we've seen other organizations like the Whistler Housing Authority get three hundred acres for uh their housing developments and whatnot for the Olympics, but it said, you know, we we will want land like that. Has there been any um you know, positive things where communities have asked for land, they've been able to get land as long as you know, we, the community, are able to service it. And and I have Mr. Black, my my engineer sitting here, and then probably the guy that keeps him awake at night wondering what the hell I'm up to now. Um, but you, we look at that, we think, any, any comments on that?
Well, I will say, knowing that there are engineers and planners in the room, I will say that um you know, there w- one thing that we always counsel our our clients on is is to beware of free land. Um, because free land is not always free. So the best pieces are always the ones that are serviced, that are connected with existing community infrastructure. These are things that we all know, right? Um, if we have to service it, if we have to put in a septic system in a more rural community, if we have to, you know, upgrade all of the services to the site, that adds an incredible cost and the land is definitely not free after that point. So making strategic decisions about what land you're going after I think is really critical in the first place. Uh, if you are engaging in maybe as part of the regional district, some sort of regional growth. It doesn't have to be a full regional growth strategy, but if you are doing some regional growth planning and regional growth management at the regional district level, um, starting to uh identify sites that may be possible early so that have, you know, an ownership structure that maybe uh they are owned by the crown or by a provincial agency that are close to existing municipal services that are maybe uh easy to connect municipal services or that you could connect through your existing municipal infrastructure planning processes. Um, those would be the types of decisions to make first while you're identifying sites. I don't have any great experience with um municipalities actually receiving land from B C Housing or other crown agencies. I'm sure it has happened before. Typically, B C Housing, when they have parcels within communities that are well-connected, they like to develop them um on their own. So a great example, this this program that's being used to develop the Downey Seat Project is relatively new. But the Provincial Rental Housing Corporation, which is B C Housing's land ownership arm, has um been developing units across uh our province for a long time. They have a pretty broad asset portfolio and they continue to develop them. So if it's a B C Housing on-site, pretty rare that you would be able to um actually get that back from them because they typically have a use strategy already for that site. Um, the crown land, I think there's some more opportunity there. This um some of the changes that happened at the provincial government last year, this whole department that was kind of put in place um was kind of this um this new department that are these like inter-agency fixers, I think is kind of the the term that people are using. And one of their goals is to um or it seems like it when it was established, we haven't really heard if um anything's come out of this, but one of the roles of that department was um to help make those connections. Municipalities who see a really prominent piece of crown land within their community or within their service boundaries uh and that would be supportable for affordable housing. And how do you um use those staff members' resources to to navigate the like actual transfer of that property or to get permission to do the site studies, which where you can find if it's actually feasible to develop on it? You know, those sorts of things, right? Um, so I don't have any like positive specific stories, but I know that the province is thinking about it and I know that they've allocated resources to uh a significant staff complement to get better at coordinating all of those things that we need to make those decisions. Uh, and to enable them to be open for housing.
Good. Any other questions or comments from council? About from staff? Mr. Simon?
Thank you, Worship. It's probably been nice for council to not hear me talk too much, which is a rarity in some of these council meetings. Um, one thing, I I really appreciate Mr. Mr. Mackey and Mr. Johnson being on with us today and really great overview of everything. Some things for council to be aware of, you know, I think staff are incredibly proud of a lot of the work that's been accomplished over the previous council and the current council and in our discussions with Mr. Mackey and his team kind of behind the scenes. You know, Rebel Stoke really is a leader on this front, but that doesn't mean that there's not more work to do. And we need to be methodical as we continue to move forward and understand the interconnectedness of our existing policy framework, our funding framework and our development context in Rebel Stoke. And one of the questions that I think is important to talk about right now, and I've been curious about, is different models for interrelationships of housing agreements that are entered into on the private side for Different models for interrelationships of housing agreements that are entered into on the private side for securing market rental, for instance. And how those are administered through various organizations as Revelstoke has been delving into this over the last few years. So I think that's an important point to, to touch on right now, to understand pros and cons of different operating models.
Great, thanks for that. Mr. Mackey, comment?
Um, I, I will say that, like, yeah, that I, I, and I will just repeat it so that, you know, Mr. Simon doesn't have to be the only one saying it. Revelstoke is absolutely, um, when I go into smaller communities and they ask me what we can do for housing, I often point at Revelstoke as an example. Um, make land available for affordable housing, support pre-development funding to get that affordable housing project off the ground. Partner with established nonprofits in your community, pursue senior government funding to get those projects built. Right? That is the, the, the model, and I think Revelstoke is, is the gold standard for, um, using that model, uh, to the best of its ability right now. In terms of the relationships you have with the private side. Um, not all small communities have the same development pressure, the pressure that Revelstoke has. And leveraging that revel, that pressure to generate assets for your community is really important. Um, the District of Squamish is doing that through their perpetually affordable housing program. Which actually allows them to extract a certain number of units in private developments that are going to go into a unit pool. That can then be allocated through housing agreements to, um, the basically operator of their choosing. Or they, um, ask the, the private developer to keep those units on their books and operate them as part of their portfolio. But under some very specific, um, you know, rental restrictions. So th- those are kind of the, the two ways that it happens. Either the, the owner, the, the private developer continues to own them. And then operates them at a lower, uh, rental rate, and that's secured through a legal housing agreement, or the units are actually, um. Uh, portioned off and sold to, I think, the District of Squamish, who then, um, either. Uh, farms out the operation through a housing agreement to a nonprofit society. Or to, um, their Squamish, um, Community Housing Corporation. I think, I think that's how they do it. More recently, I think they are actually directly tying ownership to the Squamish Community Housing Society, but I think that is still in its, in its infancy. Um, at this point with the perpetually affordable housing program. A simpler way, I mean, ye- yes, those, getting those units is great. Um, and I think if that's something that you want to pursue, that is, there's some policy in Squamish and in a couple of other communities that might be useful to, um, to explore. But, um, many times communities find it easier just to extract dollars. And to put those dollars into your affordable housing reserve and to use that affordable housing reserve to fund, uh, additional non-market projects. To, I maybe acquire land parcels that you can use to develop affordable housing. Or to potentially fund operations for a nonprofit housing society in your community. Um, yeah, not, not simple either, right? But Revelstoke, you're, you're, you've got development pressure that you can leverage. Not every community has that. So I, I think your staff are doing a lot of work to. Um, not only figure out how to build more non-market housing, but how to leverage private development to ensure affordability and perpetuity in the community.
Great, and so I have a question, going back years ago, probably in the seventies or eighties. Uh, there was a section in Squamish, uh. I can't remember the exact name, but it was called the Highlands, Garibaldi Highlands. And, and up in that area, they had co-op housing. And, um, I'm not exactly sure how that premise worked, but. I had some family that were living there and they were able to get into housing with a relatively small down payment. Not sure how, you know, how the end result was, how they got out and, and whatnot. They're, they're since long deceased. But I, I think about things like that. Are those modes of financing and getting into. Uh, a prevalent thing nowadays, Mr. Mackey, or is that kind of, uh, on the way the dodo birth?
Yeah, great question, Marisol. Um, so the likely that Garibaldi Highlands development, as well as some of the prominent, you know, Vancouver cooperative housing options that we hear of. Um, most of that co-ops that we see even across the country, uh, were funded, uh, by the Canada American Mortgage and Housing Corporation, C M H C. Um, through programs that ran kind of in the seventies and eighties. That was a really popular program that they had. And so a lot of, when you see a co-op in your community, it probably is a bit older, right? It's probably a seventies or maybe an early eighties build. Lots of them in and around where, where I live are early eighties, late seventies builds here in Victoria. Um, the funding programs for co-ops. Um, when that kind of drop-off happened on that graph I showed. That's when the funding programs or co-ops dropped off as well. We haven't really seen new ones built in a long time. And in kind of in our sector, we end up being funding chasers. We, we tailor the types of units that we're offering to the funding that is available. And that matches sort of the goals that we have as an organization. And right now there is simply no funding available for cooperatives, so we're not doing a ton of work to explore those. Uh, recently, the federal government did announce some new money that they say is going to go into exploring cooperative housing. Um, the provincial government in Ontario did something similar. I, and, um, I think it is a more popular funding mechanism for, I think historically conservative. Um, federal governments have tended to fund, um, those cooperative programs more frequently than, um, like. Uh, like liberal, um, federal regimes, so there may, there may be some more opportunity for that in the, in the future, and I could see that happening. But at the moment, uh, the funding programs that are available are there to fund affordable rental ten-year housing, not affordable homeownership options. And that, that co-ops would fall into that more homeownership, um, option.
Right, appreciate that comment. So I'll ask one last time, uh, council, any, uh, any comments or follow-up? And then, uh, Mr. Brooks home as well, so any, uh, any comments? None? Okay, council, seeing none? All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Mackey. If there's any final words that you have for us, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time today, you and Ms. Johnson.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, we'll definitely be taking some notes on what we heard during the discussion today. And we'll be getting those back to, uh, Mr. Simon and the rest of your staff to distribute out to you. And before the end of the day today, I will send out the updated PowerPoint that you all saw, um, today.
Great, thanks again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the time.
All right, uh, council, uh, we're at the end of our meeting, so I'm. For termination. So Council's statement here, Council Devlin, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Linda.